We discussed the documents before we threw them last week. There are copies of this on the table, is that correct Mike? And it's also been posted on the city website. It would be under the city website quote unquote "city news." You'll be able to find it on the website as well. It's on there now. Just by way of a little bit of history, prior to the 1970s, and we base this upon interviews with our oldest living retirees in the police department. Prior to the mid-'70s, there were no animal control officers at all. However, I also don't think that the number of dog issues that were going on in the '50s and the '60s were of the significant number that they are currently. And the arrangement then was that they used what is now the Animal Protection Foundation. It had apparently a different name at that time. And one of two things would happen if a dog was taken into custody by a police officer. Either the officer would drive to the APF and deliver the animal directly to them, or in many cases, they would actually respond out with their own vehicle and pick the animal up from the officer out on the street. In the 1970s, the police department did create an animal control officer unit. It consisted of one individual to manage all the dog complaints. And approximately 1984, the city went to two full-time animal control officers, one of which is still working. We have two full-time animal control officers. One has 30 years of service, the other has seven. And we also had two part-time animal control officers until earlier this year, when one of those officers had to resign because her full-time employment had a schedule conflict that would not allow her to attend to the duties as a part-timer. There was also a point during the early '90s to the early 2000s, we used Emerald Acres, which I believe is in Moriahville, as another location to take the dogs. That subsequently went out of business. And what brought us to the point here where we had to do something in the city, because there was no city shelter. In 2012, the APF asked us to attend a meeting, which we did. It was then Assistant Chief, now Chief Brian Kilcullen, who's on my left, and myself went to the meeting. APF advised us that they would no longer accept municipal dogs from the city of Schenectady. So that obviously was our mainstay. That was the organization that we used almost exclusively to accept the dogs that were taken off the street. The Agon Markets law requires in their section that if you are a city jurisdiction that issues dog licenses, you must have a shelter or a pound. They do give you an exception to that if you can contract with another jurisdiction, another pound, another shelter. And what we ran into is, we tried Hudson Mohawk down in Manans, and we were not able to get a contract from them. APF, as I just told you, was no longer going to be available. We went to Montgomery County, who gave us a contract. However, it was space available. So the only time that they were obligated to accept the dog from the city was if they in fact had space. And their facility is also not a large facility to begin with. We had no choice but to build some kind of shelter by law. We talked to Agon Markets. It was a short period of time where we actually kept the dogs in the Sallyport of the police department. They described to us the type of arrangement we would have to have there. And this was only a short-term arrangement that they would allow. And we did satisfy that. But then we also had to put our mind to work as to what we were going to do about meeting the requirement of having a shelter. Commissioner Olson from Public Works indicated that he had a building down there that he felt could be retrofitted. And the decision was made to do that. And we designed the building, the interior of the building, in conjunction with Agon Markets. They let us know what the requirements were. We traveled to Gilderlin. We were already aware of what APF had, as well as Hudson Mohawk. So Agon Markets was involved every step of the way in the design of the kennel. They told us what we were going to need. And again, this is designed to be a short-term arrangement, and it was never designed to be a long-term arrangement. The ACOs have, the current ACOs, have received their training from the ASPCA, the Humane Society, Agon Markets, and several other different organizations. And that includes in-service training, some of which is sponsored annually by Agon Markets. The veterinary care, we have always had veterinary care available to us, and we have utilized that through the local clinics when necessary to do so. Regarding euthanization, the Agon Markets law is very, very strict and very, very specific about who can euthanize an animal, the conditions under which it has to be done, and the manner in which it is done. So any euthanization that we have performed is done by a licensed veterinary clinic with the appropriate people. The city employees do not participate in the process whatsoever. And just to dispel one rumor that's apparently floating around out there, no dog has ever been euthanized at the Anthony Street facility, nor will any dog be euthanized at the Anthony Street facility. Agon Markets is the governing authority for the operation of municipal shelters. They have both announced and unannounced inspections. The unannounced inspections take place when they arrive at the kennel. They will call and ask someone to come over and let them in so they can do their inspections. As of the date of the report, a week ago, we had had five inspections of not only the facility, but the records. And then we had another inspection last Sat-- excuse me, last Friday. So we have been inspected six times by Agon Markets. We have also responded to a complaint from the New York State Attorney General's office that they received about the kennel conditions. They sent a field investigator from Montgomery County down here to inspect the facility. And he had no issues with what he found at the kennel. Kennel opened in June of 2013. And for the first 14 months of operation, 116 dogs were adopted out. That is 51% of the total of 226 that we received. Forty were euthanized. 67 dogs were returned to their rightful owners. And three are currently at the kennel. So we have had a pretty good percentage of returning dogs to the owners, considering that the large majority of the dogs that we get are not licensed. Many don't even have a collar. We have no idea who owns them. A lot of them are frankly set free by irresponsible owners. And that makes it very difficult to connect anybody with the dog. We did have some labor issues early on between the police department and the CSCE. CSCE is of course the union for the animal control officers regarding issues of exclusivity and whether or not the police department employees can be ordered to in fact perform duties at the kennel. We resolved that, and we had a number of police officers that filled in when we didn't have an ACO available. They were volunteering to do it. Their union was not really pleased about it because they didn't see it as a duty as a police officer, and perhaps that's correct. Nevertheless, we did get through it. They changed the animal control policy regarding the operations of the kennel and expanded the responsibilities of the ACOs to cover the operation of the kennel. And we also updated the forms that are filed in connection with the kennel operation. Like any other project that's brand-new, and it was brand-new certainly to the city, you know, there were some bumps in the road. And staffing was clearly the number-one issue. When you only have two full-time ACOs that work five days a week, eight hours a day, it doesn't divide very well into seven days a week with a at least 12 to 20-hour operation. But with the two part-time ACOs, we were able to cover that gap. And then again, we lost the one, and that created a problem. We have hired two more part-time ACOs. They went on the payroll yesterday. And they will join the one part-time ACO we had left. So we have two full-time ACOs, three part-time ACOs. And we feel that should not be an issue any longer that covered the gap that exists just by the sheer numbers of full-time employees. We had an issue with water at the facility in the sense that the small bowls that you put the water in just didn't work out. The animals would bump into them, the water would spill. And we replaced the watering system over there with larger buckets based upon the recommendations of other facilities. And that problem has been resolved. The question of feeding, how many times, how much, how often? We polled five or six veterinarians regarding their thoughts on this. They said there was nothing wrong with what we were doing. But if you wanted to feed them two, three, or even four times a day, that's perfectly acceptable. But you have to keep in mind that the caloric intake for the animal cannot exceed quote-unquote "the daily requirement." So we've decided to go to a twice-a-day feeding schedule where we may have to divide obviously the food into two different distinct amounts, both for the daytime and the evening time feeding. We asked Agon Markets about the 12-hour rule. And what they told us is that it's not strictly construed. For example, if you were to feed a dog at 8 o'clock this morning, and 8 o'clock tonight, there was still food available to the dog, that satisfies the law, and the 12-hour clock starts tonight. But we're going to go to the twice-a-day feeding. We should have no trouble accommodating that at all. And again, we're going to have to obviously put it in portions in order to do that because you can't. The other thing the vets brought up is you want to be careful not to overfeed your dogs. Some dogs can get very ill if you overfeed them. And they cautioned us against even using automatic feeders because they claim there are some breeds of dogs that will in fact eat and eat and eat. And it can cause very, very serious veterinary issues for them. So they kind of cautioned us to stay away from them. And they also brought up the fact that if the desire is there to eat and eat, that there's a possibility the dog may in fact, you know, literally rip open the automatic feeder to get to the food because it's a strong impulse. So we will not be going to automatic feeding. We will do manual feeding. And we're taking the advice of the veterinarians. Walking the dogs. Our policy is that all non-dangerous dogs will be walked at least once a day, but usually two or more times a day. And each ACO will be assigned to walk each dog housed in that kennel other than a dangerous dog during their tour of duty. We have taken some measurements over there to try and address the possibility of building dog runs. And we're not quite sure if we're going to be able to facilitate it at least right away. But we have plans in place to try and do exactly that. And we'll see if we can work this out. The Mohawk Hudson facility has been very, very gracious to us. They have bent over backwards. The mayor and I met with Brad Shear, who is the director over there, several weeks back in his office. And they came and said, "We'll be more than happy to help you." They've been in business for a very long time. It's a big shelter. They have room for 82 animals. And we are taking him up on his offer. He's been very gracious. We will tomorrow contact his training person, if you will, to establish the date where we can take all five ACOs, part-time and full-time, and go over there for training on a lot of different areas. Pick up on whatever procedures that they use over there and policies that we may not use or may not even be aware of. But we will model what we do here after what they do there. Brad Shear is just a terrific individual. And you know that the minute you start talking to him. They have been literally, you know, as gracious as we could ever ask for. So we're anxious to get that done. We have put the pictures of the stray dogs where we do not know the names of the owners on the city website. And we've also included on the city website and the police department as well not only the pictures of the animals we do not know who owns, but the redemption process, what is required, how you go about doing it. And if anybody, you know, wants to know what the process is or wants to check and see if perhaps their lost dog is there, that is now available. The issue of volunteers, we see a distinct possibility to have a benefit from the use of volunteers. However, we have been cautioned by our attorneys, as well as specifically our labor attorney, that there may be issues regarding liability and whether or not, for example, if I were to be a volunteer and I waived my right to bring an action against the city for some type of injury. That's only step one in the process. The question we don't have answered, and we're seeking the answer to, is does any insurance company who reimburses a policyholder for some type of injury sustained while being a volunteer, does the insurance company now have the right to bring an action against us to recover that money, whatever it may be? And the other issue our labor attorney brings to our attention is there are some decisions out there that hold that these people as volunteers could be seen as agents of the city and would have to be covered by workers' compensation. Now, it's that kind of world we live in. But those are the answers that we need to get before we can really actively proceed down that road. We certainly haven't discounted it. We certainly don't object to it. But when it creates a liability in one fashion or another for the city, that's something we need to know before we go into it. And that decision obviously will be the product of even more discussion, certainly the city council and the mayor. We'll weigh in on that and see if there's some way to accommodate those concerns. The microchip scanners. Agon Markets says that as a short-time, short-term facility, we were not required to have microchip scanners. However, we did have a microchip scanner. What we did learn was the one that we had is not up-to-date enough to do the scanning of apparently more sophisticated chips that they use now. So we applied for a federal grant to buy it. We received the grant. We did buy it. We now have both the old and the new. And they are all trained in the use of that piece of equipment. The air quality has been a subject of a great deal of discussion. I met with the wastewater treatment facility coordinator, Mr. LaFond, as well as Commissioner Olson. They advised me that the Department of Environmental Conservation is the presence, if you will, for the federal EPA. That the facility is inspected annually by the DEC. And they have never had an inspection that did not pass. Nor have they ever had any kind of an OSHA complaint, either filed by OSHA directly in behalf of somebody or through an internal complaint. Nor have they had any record of any unusual health issues by the employees who worked there. Regarding the air conditioning, we talked to Agon Markets about that. Agon Markets advises that the city is under no obligation to install air conditioning in the shelter. They feel that the fans are adequate. If we wanted to do it, could we do it? Probably. There's nothing that says we can't. But as far as being required to do it, that is not the case. Rescue organizations, again. To her credit, Tina Hudson worked with us earlier this year and facilitated adoption of a number of animals. That's what they call rapid notify. That goes from midnight phone calls about broken water pipes to a large variety of things. Again, you know, we have worked with rescue groups. We want to work with the rescue groups. Hudson Mohawk again does accept a lot of our dogs to adopt out. We have an arrangement with them that if we have a dog that we feel is non-aggressive and could be an adoptable pet, they will accept that dog, and have been accepting those dogs from us. They charge us a one-time fee of $25 to process whatever it is they need to do on their end. And again, they've been responsible for a number of the adoptions. But you know, Tina did facilitate a lot of that. She also was able to get donations of food and things like that for the kennel. And we're very appreciative of that. The same to Price Chopper, who has provided us with food for the kennel. And obviously, these are quality foods for the dogs. But again, we thank them. It's still an ongoing project over there. Do we have other things we need to do a little bit better? Absolutely. Regarding financial realizations. In 2012, our expenses for harboring dogs and other facilities, veterinary care, and things of that nature, not including the salaries of the animal control officers in 2012 was $81,172. In 2013, the cost over and beyond the salaries of the ACOs was $63,352. And 2014 year-to-date, the expenses, not including the ACO salary, has been $5,635. It should give you some idea of how expensive the program had become for the city. We believe that will go down. I mean, there's going to be expenses, and that's, you know, not totally avoidable. But, you know, it certainly pales in comparison to what it was. I'd also like to take the opportunity while we're here to address issues in an email that was sent to all the council members on September 10th that I haven't otherwise touched on here. Will the dogs receive immediate vetting and evaluation? What behaviorist and vet will they be working with? And will the dogs start receiving distemper shots upon arrival? We don't have a behaviorist. We do have vets on call. Not quite sure what we mean by immediate vetting. I can only tell you this, that if we receive a dog that is injured, has obvious health issues, or is displaying some symptomology of health issues, they go to the vet. The distemper shot, we talked to vets about distemper, as well as parvo. We have had cases, not recently, where we've had a dog that did have the parvo, which manifests, I'm told, within five days. And we have had to quarantine the entire kennel and repeatedly scrub it down and things of that nature. We have talked to Dr. Hurnus, and I hope by perhaps tomorrow, we will have an arrangement so we can have her give the parvo shot and the distemper shot at a very, very minimal cost. She recommends doing that. So we will proceed in that direction. And hopefully, that should be a done deal within a couple of days. The microchip scanner, I've already spoken about. I'd like to talk about this one particular case. And I'm not going to name the individual. The council conceded in their email. But this was a case where a dog owner had difficulty retrieving their dog because of the lack of proper filing of the paperwork by the ACO. That did happen. It was not the fault of the ACO. It was a police officer that had to go pick the dog up in lieu of not having an ACO. He took it to Anthony Street. The paperwork did not get to the city clerk until the end of the next day, which was late. No tways about it. But we corrected that situation. We were able to take that dog. By the way, the dog was not licensed and did not have rabies inoculation. Had the dog been licensed, this never would have happened. But through Chief Falvo, the dog received the necessary shots. We personally teamed up with the owner of the dog and drove the dog back to his house. Is that correct? So we tried to correct the situation. Unfortunately, had it been licensed in the first instance, we wouldn't even have gone here. But that was the fact on that dog. The dangerous dogs, we will not be walking. That is consistent with other shelters, including Hudson Mohawk. They do not walk dangerous dogs. If you remember, a few months back, they had a very serious attack over at their facility where a number of the workers were injured by a dangerous dog who subsequently was shot by the Manans Police. And again, they also asked about quarantining for parvo. And again, we have done that. We know the drill. And again, they'll be inoculated here by sometime this week. And hopefully, we won't have an issue there. Regarding the air samples and a plan for relocation of the kennel. We have no sustainable reason right now, based upon what we know from ANCON, Environmental Protection Agency, and the agency heads, as well as the unions, to believe that that is necessary. It has a pungent odor, and it's the sludge from the treatment facility. A few years back, and I'm not an expert in this area, but Commissioner Olson told me there used to be repeated complaints from the neighborhood regarding the odor that emanated from this plant. And they took certain measures to- And they took certain measures to correct that and it's also my understanding that now no more complaints. While it may be somewhat offensive and it may be uncomfortable, we see no evidence to suggest that it is a health issue for dogs or the people that work there or for the people that live close by who live and work there. So we do not have any plans at this point to do anything along that line. It is not a brownfield and never was a brownfield, according to what I've been told. What is happening to the dogs after the seven-day hold and what rescues will they work with? Well, there's more than one holding period and it depends on whether you know the owner of the dog, whether he's notified in person, whether he's notified by certified mail, return receipt requested. We do all those things, but there's different holding periods. If you have a dog that you cannot identify the owner of, the five-day period is applicable. If you've identified the owner and you personally notify that subject, other than by mail, it's a seven-day hold. And if you know the owner, but you reach out to that owner by certified mail, it is a nine-day hold period. And this is under the Ag and Markets law. So we meet that requirement. We follow that requirement. Those are their rules and those are the rules that we use. There also was a comment in here about mandatory rehabilitation before any animal can be euthanized. We verified with New York State Ag and Markets, there's no such provision in the law. What it says is you can adopt them out or you can euthanize them. Nowhere in the law, and they verify this, is there a statement that rehabilitation is required before any euthanization of an animal. Again, after the waiting period has expired. We want to take this in the right direction. You know, it's a little troubling when you hear certain things out there that you know just aren't true. There's another one out there now that says that when we clean the kennels, we don't remove the dogs. And the dogs get sprayed with whatever stuff is at the end of the hose, if you will. That's not accurate. The way we built the kennel is that in the middle of these sections, there is a gate that can be removed. It can be lifted. So when we clean a kennel, we lift the gate, the dog goes to the other half of that section, if you can picture what I'm saying. The gate goes back down. Dog is not in there when it's cleaned. And that's the way we do it. But again, it's like the bloodletting. The veterinary people have extremely strict guidelines about how to do things during euthanasia. There's no dog that we're aware of had their throats cut and allowed to bleed out on the floor or anything similar to that. And frankly, that's outrageous. My brother-in-law is a retired Cornell-educated veterinarian and his statement to me was, "There wouldn't be any use for all that blood to begin with." And he says it would be unconscionable and it certainly would be a violation of the Ag and Markets law. And I can't picture some vet clinic risking losing their license over such an atrocious way to euthanize an animal. But again, as I said, we want to take this in the right direction. We're not experts at it. We rely on Mohawk-Hudson. We rely on Ag and Markets. Been very good, both organizations. And, you know, things are going to get better, you know? I feel we were not guilty of a lot of things that are being thrown our way, but we got pushed into a set of circumstances frankly, we weren't interested in proceeding in either. When the law gives you no option, you know, and the facility that you relied on for so many, many years, and we thank them for that because, you know, they were so gracious about it when they had space. You know, and all of a sudden, on fairly short notice, no longer available. So it was very, very difficult. But we will keep you posted periodically as the direction we're going in. Certainly, if the council has any questions they'd like to ask us, we'll be more than happy to respond. I have Brian Kilcullen, the chief, with me. Assistant Chief Jack Falvo and Assistant Chief Michael Seber are here with me as well. They all played an integral role in the development of the kennel and the operations thereof.
Questions to the council? Mr. Reba?
Yes, I wanted to ask you this. Do we have a dollar amount on how much care is given to a dog when it's taken and the dog is injured or sick? Is there a dollar?
We don't get a lot of them that are injured. We do get animals that are struck by vehicles. That's probably the most common. We don't keep track of it per dog. I mean, at best, you would be able to come up with, like, we can tell you what the veterinary bills would be, but we can't tell you, you know, what dog A cost us and dog, you know, some, there's no vet bills. Some, there are vet bills.
I guess I'm saying, Commissioner, if the dog is brought in and needs some extensive work, it's going to be higher than I figure for over $200 to euthanize the dog. Is that true?
I don't know. Do you know Brian? Brian can address that.
Generally, the bills that we... When we do need to send a dog to a veterinarian, generally the bills are in the couple hundred-dollar range, $200 to $300 range. We spoke with Ag and Markets to get some sort of guidance from them as well and their suggestion was that we do work with a vet to come up with a dollar figure. Again, when a dog is not, we don't know the owner of a dog. We've taken responsibility of that dog. Now, if we knew the owner, the owner might say, "I'm willing to spend $3,000 to do what I can to save that dog." We're not in that position, unfortunately. If the dog, because of the condition of the dog, has to be euthanized, then that decision's made at that time. But generally, when a dog does go to the vet, it is in the $200 to $300 range for a dog that doesn't need veterinarian care.
And another, you know, pertinent point is that there are a lot of no-kill shelters out there. They do not euthanize dogs. So the number of practices that will in fact accommodate euthanization is somewhat limited, certainly in the Capital District. So that's another factor that enters into it. It's not like it's, not sure it should be competitive. I wouldn't want to see that either, but the fact of life is, we have a limited amount of facilities that will carry out euthanization.
And just on that, sort of bloodletting, I understood as different than I think your understanding, Commissioner. I don't think we were told, I wasn't told that they were slipping their throats, but they were transfusing the blood out of the dogs until they passed away from lack of blood for a blood bank. And that's what I was told. I saw an email, you know, a conversation.
There was one case that was brought to my attention after it even occurred where one dog, they took one vial of blood to use to save the life of another dog prior to the dog being euthanized. One vial, period. And that's what it was used for.
So it was just wasn't a practice?
No. And I don't know the answer to this, but I am told that there is some kind of a blood bank for animals, for dogs. Is anybody familiar with that at all? I don't know anything. I can't address that because I don't know, but I did get that information that such a blood bank does exist.
Other questions?
Yes, and Commissioner, outstanding presentation, the governor and mayor, I think covered probably everything, certainly most of our council members, the panel, hopefully the others as well. But the question of the new employees that we hired, any additional coverage? Can you just explain what their hours would be, what their date and schedule would be, generally, after you have said it?
They will...
Especially the weekend as well.
Right. They will be filling in the gaps that the full-time ACOs are not scheduled to work. Now, that could be due to vacation. It could be due to personal leave, illness, that type of thing, but generally, we will use the three of them to plug the holes on the schedule. That's Chief Falvo's responsibility. They, based upon their full-time jobs, we believe that they're going to be readily available and we intend to make good use of them. You know, we're lucky to get them. I mean, it's not like they're being paid big money to do this. They have an interest in it. They have a desire to learn more about it and we were lucky to get good candidates and we should be in good shape.
Anything else? All right. If not, again, I thank you and the chiefs. I think this is an excellent report. We really appreciate your addressing all of the issues. And with that, we will move back downstairs and continue our committee meetings. Thank you all very much.